We'll call this meeting to order. The Orange County Board of Education pledges to its citizens to conduct its business in a courteous and productive manner, showing respect for fellow board members, staff, and citizens. The Board asks its citizens to conduct themselves with the same courtesy towards both school personnel and each other. A moment of silence will be observed before each meeting. The Board asks that you check your cell phones and other electronic devices to be certain that they are either turned off or on vibrate to avoid interruptions in the meeting. We'll do the pledge of allegiance before the moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Dr. Felder.
Yes, good evening, Chair Atherton, Vice Chair Purcell, to the entire Board, to our staff, community members, and families. Tonight, we want to recognize some of the ways Orange County schools honored the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. last week. We started our community celebration and acts of service on Sunday, January 18th, by participating in the Dr. King's wreath-laying service at Calvin Street, sponsored by Hate Free Schools. Mr. Lee A. Williams II, our chief equity officer, provided a keynote speech entitled, "I Have a Dollar and a Dream," that I understand took people to church, as the saying goes. As part of the 28th Annual Northern Orange Celebration for Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Orange County Schools students joined others from neighboring counties in the annual oratorical contest on January 7th at Gaines Chapel AME Church in Eflin. This year's contestants addressed the theme "Imagining the Dream Fulfilled." On Monday, January 19th, the winners presented their original speeches during closing commemorative service for Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday at Mount Zion AME Church. Among the speakers was Gravely Hill Middle School 8th grader John Williams IV, winner of the middle school division. All the winners received awards from the Northern Orange County NAACP and Northern Orange Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commemorative Celebration Committee. This committee of local churches also organized the Drive-Thru Car Parade, now a regular feature of local MLK Day celebrations since 2021. The parade began with cars gathered at Gaines AME Church and at Hillsborough Elementary, formerly Central High School and AL Stanback Middle School, along with a yellow bus, not just any yellow bus, it was an Orange County Schools bus, that was dressed up, as you can see, I think in what, so there's Mr. Williams in the previous, but there's our bus. And next year, we already have plans, instead of just balloons, we will have balloons with the MLK on either side, so it's already set. And so we're excited about that. But I also want to thank board members, Mr. Atherton, Mrs. Smiley, and Ms. Hauser for joining, our longtime Orange County Schools bus driver, and there she is, pictured there, Ms. Kathleen Long, who was so excited, so excited to drive the bus in the parade, and she also took board members to the service, as she was able to participate in the service at Mount Zion, where our very own Mrs. Marie Tate, as well as Mr. Atherton and I, gave brief remarks. And again, we congratulate Mr. John Williams IV, who won the middle school division of this year's oratorical contest. We are currently planning to recognize him at an upcoming board meeting on February 6th, so I invite everyone to come back or tune in. You will be in for a treat. I also want to note that as we honor the legacy of Dr. King last week, yes, I've mentioned that we started our celebration with the wreath-laying service at the Calvin Street, sponsored by Hate Free Schools, and Mr. Lee Williams and his speech, so that was in my notes twice, if you're wondering, but it was worth mentioning again. So at any rate, thank you all for that, and then off to our next update or recognition. And so at this time, would our staff from the maintenance department, so where are you all? Oh, here they come. It's a larger team. Any others from the maintenance department? Come on down. There they come. So Boyd, you may recall, last month, we asked our technology team to join you for recognition. Tonight, we continue introducing the valued members of the operations team, and would like to recognize this team, our maintenance team, led by the one and only Nick Mensey, for the phenomenal work they have done both before, during, and now following the demands, and I must say, the heavy demands of the pandemic. The maintenance staff here tonight, and who are pictured on this slide, work in ways we almost never see and fully appreciate. I recall one night in particular, at Orange High School, working well into the night, and just so appreciative of their work, and that includes over the weekends, in the heat of the summer and in the cold of the winter, they are doing the work for Orange County Schools. So we are very blessed to have these dedicated professionals who make sure we are in good working order and operating safely for students and staff at all times. What makes their work exceptional and so highly valued is that almost, and that is almost always goes unnoticed, we rarely ever notice when things are going well. We mostly take it for granted, but throughout the pandemic and 365 or 366 days of the year, this team is watching out for the safety and well-being of everyone who relies on our schools. And when there is an issue, they respond quickly, they respond professionally, and with the skills that come from knowing schools inside out. So tonight, we honor all of you, and we say that your service is one of the things that makes us who we are in Orange County Schools. Thank you. It's just a start, and we applaud our maintenance team. So let's give them a round of applause. And so while Nick comes forward, I'd also like to invite Mr. Patrick Avili, Deputy Superintendent, to come forward to say a few words on behalf of this awesome team as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that, Dr. Felder. I'm pretty sure that you have broken into my email, because that is basically my entire speech. I would also like to say thank you to the Board, thank you for the recognition tonight, we very much appreciate it as a staff and as a department. I will also say that we would have more employees here, but Hank and I have worked them so hard today that they all had to take a break tonight. So I would like to say very, very, very much, thank you so much for the recognizing the work that our staff does, and we are a family at maintenance. I think about it, a lot of times, we spend more time together than we probably spend with our families. We are at that facility a lot, the guys do work in the rain, they work when the sun is out in the heat of summer, they clean up things that most of us would prefer not to ever have to think about. We do fix a lot of things that most folks never have any idea were broken, and we try hard to keep everything humming along. We work critically through work orders when they come up, we fix many things that many people don't understand or don't know what they do. I think about the hours that we do spend after hours, and remembering, Dr. Felder was very kind, and probably some of the best pizza I think our guys ever ate, she was kind and brought us a meal one night while we were working at Orange High School, and we were, we were very much appreciative of that. As a district, it's pretty amazing, we have completed since 2003, is when we started tracking our work orders, we've completed over 120,000 work orders since 2003 as a, as a department. Many of those are preventive maintenance, but a lot of them are requests from school and staff. That's a lot of, a lot of work orders. We do work together closely as a team, and we do really, we really do relish when we can make a change for a student or for a staff, and I don't think it would be speaking out of turn for everybody that works in our department, that children really do relate to our guys. They will come up to our staff in the hallway and tell us thank you, they will say good day to us, they recognize when, when maintenance facility staff is in the building, and they are appreciative, and our guys really do notice that. We also really notice it from nights like tonight, when there's recognition that's given to them. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you so much.
What can you say, after Dr. Felder and Nick has explained so well what this team does behind the scenes every single day, the amount of work that they do, the care and the efforts that they put forward is just unbelievable. You can only imagine seeing the operation from a different lens, whether it's snowstorms, trees down, power outages, inclement weather, all of those things add on to the daily work that they do, and they do it without question. They do it because they love their job, they do it because they care about the district, they care about the students, whether it's 12:00 PM in the afternoon or 12:00 AM early in the morning, they're out there making sure that we can operate, making sure that schools can open, and making sure that it's safe, and our buildings are ready when we ask them to do that. They also go beyond just the basic needs, you know, we've had maintenance staff who have gone out and read books with children, they've gone out to participate, to help out, to support, and volunteer in our schools as well, and we just can't thank them enough for the work that they do. And I also want to say thank you to a former principal, who always, every year, would make sure that there was a special time and a place at her school to recognize the maintenance department, whether it was a cookout or a special meal within the cafeteria, they recognize that and know that our principals in our schools value the work that they do. So thank you, and thank you to the district and our community for supporting this team.
So any comments from board members?
No, being a numbers person, I would love to know how many square feet of facilities and how many acres of land you actually serve, because I want to, it's a daunting task, I can't imagine.
The acreage I cannot give you, I do know that our total square footage as a district, and this includes schools and all the other facilities, we're right at 1.5 million square feet.
Wow.
And included, basically, everybody on staff, which would include folks like Donna, who is taking the seat, our admins and our office personnel, we basically have 20 people on staff for 1.5 million square feet.
Wow.
So that's, that's a lot to cover.
Grounds, maybe Patrick knows a number?
Don't have that off the top of my head.
Well, that's fine, that's, you've made your point, thank you so much.
Thank you all, we really appreciate everything y'all do every day, and we couldn't maintain our buildings, especially the shape they're in, and we appreciate everything y'all do. Thank y'all so much.
That concludes recognitions, Mr. Atherton.
Thank you, Dr. Felder. Next, we have public comments. The Board of Education welcomes public comments, which are governed by Board Policy 2310.
Mr. Atherton, I think we need to adopt the agenda before comments.
Yes, thank you. So are there any items to be pulled from consent? I am not aware of any. All right, with that, can we get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further conversation? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, now back to public comment. The Board of Education welcomes comments, which are governed by Board Policy 2310 and North Carolina General Statute 143-318.17. A person wishing to address the Board must sign up prior to the Board's regular meeting. Comments will be limited to three minutes. When the three-minute ends, the speaker must stop speaking immediately, yielding time to another speaker will not be permitted. All public comments should be civil and non-disruptive. Per policy, board members will listen carefully but will not respond to the speakers. Who do we have up first?
Up first, we have Sheri Calligan.
Dr. Felder, Chair Atherton, Vice Chair Purcell, members of the Board, and members of the Orange County Schools Cabinet, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Sheri Calligan, I am a community member, mother of two Orange County School students, Orange County Association of Educators Vice President, and a veteran educator who has worked in the system for 14 years. Throughout my time in OCS, I have built a reputation for being an advocate for students and teachers. It is my goal to help foster environments where teachers feel heard and supported, because research shows that educators who feel valued are more likely to remain in the classroom, which leads to positive learning environments and outcomes for students. Children are the reason we are all here this evening. Tonight, I would like to draw public attention to the efforts of Dr. Felder and her cabinet to support the educators and staff of Orange County Schools. First, Dr. Felder has visited each building in Orange County Schools to hear directly from staff about what is going well and improvements that need to be made, both at building and district levels. She also holds monthly roundtable meetings with Teachers of the Year, where teachers share ideas, celebrate the innovative activities happening throughout OCS, and discuss concerns. Dr. Felder and her cabinet hold monthly meetings with OCAE. These meetings ensure that educators have a seat at the table when the cabinet considers issues that directly affect us. During our meetings, we have worked together to brainstorm ways to retain staff during a national teacher shortage, make improvements to district communication for staff, and discuss the inequities in OCS and how current school assignments perpetuate these longstanding inequities. While I have not always agreed with Dr. Felder's decisions, nor have I agreed with every decision of this Board, I can say that Dr. Felder is working to understand the issues that impact those of us on the ground, in the buildings with children each day. In my time as an OCS educator, I have worked under several superintendents. Dr. Felder is the only superintendent that has taken the time and effort to listen to the concerns of those of us who work directly to impact the future of Orange County Schools' children. I would like to thank Dr. Felder for these efforts and encourage the Board to reflect on the impact this work has on making educators feel valued. Educators who feel valued, stay. Our children are negatively impacted- Our children are negatively impacted when educators do not feel valued and they will leave our classrooms. I will say it again, educators who feel valued, stay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Up next is Jennifer Scarlett.
I'm here to speak on behalf of the Orange High School Band about the band room and the possibility of having a flat band room. I am currently the band booster president for the Orange High School Band. Um, my son is also a member of the marching band and the winter percussion ensemble. Because of this, I volunteer for a lot of band activities and events. I want to talk about flattening the band room. The band room currently consists of six risers. There are a number of percussion instruments that have to be moved up those risers. These instruments can weigh anywhere from 200 to 400 pounds and require multiple kids to move them. Moving these large instruments causes multiple issues. As a parent, the most important of these issues is the possibility of kids getting hurt. We experienced this during the current year's marching band season where we had a kid injure their back lengthening these instruments. We also had some close calls as well and have been lucky that there weren't more serious injuries. All kids are expected to help in moving these instruments back into the band room after a competition, practice, or any other performance. But for the heavier of those instruments, there's only a small number of kids that are able to move these instruments. So the risk is higher for these children. The second issue is that these instruments are not intended to be picked up and moved around. They have wheels and are intended to only be rolled into place. Picking them up and moving them has led to parts coming off and other damage that has, uh, caused us money to, uh, for repairs. Um, and it, we also lose time with those instruments. We've thought through solutions to the risers. Um, we had a ramp at one point, but that's not a permanent solution. This ramp was in place and had to be used for a number of years. It deteriorated over time and was, it's no longer in use. I personally witnessed this ramp in use and it came with a lot of risk as well and did not provide a full solution to the riser issue. A ramp only moves the instruments to the top riser and at that point, they still have to be carried down several risers to get into place as these instruments don't all fit on the top riser. It's also a dangerous experience pushing a 200 to 400 pound instrument up a ramp at a fairly steep incline. It took a lot of strength and multiple kids to still push the instruments. And it can still slide back down that, uh, riser. To the, uh, the best solution is to flatten the band room. We want to, uh, prevent injuries in the future. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Seth Hanzick.
School board and OHS, um, staff and members, we thank you for giving me the opportunity to come out and speak with you guys tonight. And I am also here to talk about the band room. As Ms. Scarlett presented before, I am that student that got injured due to the strenuous activity. I am the current percussion captain over the Orange Band Program. And during my responsibilities of this, I am responsible of making sure these instruments get moved up and down during our various activities. During the two to three month, um, span of our marching season, I am having to constantly move up and down each of these averaging 300 pound instruments. Takes several of us and as I said, I'm having to do quite a bit of work up and down. Unfortunately, about two months in, during the third week of August, I suffered a severe back injury. The left column muscle along my spine was severely severed and I had to go to the hospital for it. I was able to recover, but it took about two weeks to recover from it. During these two weeks, I had to stay at home, do on medical leave and following this, I had missed several of my classes, one of the biggest ones being my AP Calculus class. Due to this, um, two weeks being out, it's a very fast-paced class and unfortunately, I'm having to stop my studies with it because of this injury. Just as a whole, this, this problem with our band room is one that will impact us for several years if it's not fixed. As for the past four years as I've been there, it's been very difficult to move them. And we just want to find a good solution for this to prevent me and several other students into the future from having to suffer injuries from this. As Ms. Scarlett said, we have had several close calls with moving these up and down and a ramp has been, um, posed as a solution in the past, but due to this, it causes steep angles, which is very difficult to push up and down on these very heavy instruments. And we just hope that we'll be able to find a good solution for this that'll work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Up next is Lachandra Strong.
Good evening, board and, um, administrators. All over this country, there has been a concerted effort for, um, in schools to eliminate black leadership. Recently, we saw an attack on Dr. Hamlet in Southern Orange and now we, now I'm afraid that our own leadership may be challenged. This is not a coincidence. We saw Moms for Liberty and anti-inclusion parent groups, uh, creep into our political campaigns, focus on impeding our equity progress and also, um, more specifically plotting to challenge Dr. Felder's place here. Some of the members of the, of our community are committed to a belief of exclusion. Quite frankly, diversity scares them. This means that black and brown children and other marginalized groups will continue to have difficulty getting the support they need. We cannot let this happen. Sadly, our elected officials are getting the wrong message. They are beholding to those who supported the large signs in Orange County, untrue websites, car line protests and parent groups. They have promised to dismantle equity, promote false promises, I'm sorry, promote a single, um, narrative and dismantle our, our equity in our schools. Again, this is the result of a strategic political, it's calculated and it's working. But that's, but not on our watch. I have asked folks in our community to come and to talk about how we value having black leadership. We value the work that Dr. Felder is doing in this district. It feels awesome to be able to have someone that we could call on when people have problems in the district. And the one thing we know is that she will listen and she will respond. I hope you will listen to the, the speeches that are coming before you and I hope you will take the time to listen to children who have a different story to tell than those that are thinking that Dr. Felder is not valued in this district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Heather Redding.
My name is Heather Redding and I'm a parent of two children in Orange County Schools. I'm here to express my gratitude towards one person this evening, a person whose leadership in Orange County Schools has navigated our community through an unprecedented pandemic and he was deserving of recognition. Superintendent Felder has steered our school district through uncharted territory in a climate where right-wing groups have attempted and are still trying to undermine public health experts, where they are targeting teachers and librarians for embracing diversity and inclusion, are trying to whitewash our educational curriculum and are wanting to deny trans kids their civil and human rights. As you well know, the extremist group Moms for Liberty has been mobilizing across the nation to implement a white Christian heteronormative agenda in public schools. They brag about their involvement in the termination of superintendents who don't yield to their extremism. Such superintendents include people like Mr. Deion Jackson, the first, but now former black superintendent of Brooklyn County School District in South Carolina, and Larry Levin, a former superintendent of Florida's Union Free School, um, an openly gay member of the LGBTQ community. I'm concerned that the local Moms Against Liberty chapter agenda includes targeting black leaders in public education. One hallmark of systemic racism is holding black folks to higher standards than their white counterparts and expecting absolute perfection. In 21, Moms for Liberty was up in arms over the belief that OCS teachers were being specifically trained in critical race theory. Dr. Felder's administration shared a document, a very transparent document called Critical Race Theory FAQ, um, which laid out talking points for staff. Um, and it also laid out the scope of the district's equity framework and explicitly stated that OCS doesn't teach CRT. Moms for Liberty's response was to claim OCS was training teachers how to deflect questions about CRT. In short, impossible standards are expected of our superintendent, who should be evaluated on the progress our, our county has made under her leadership during the unprecedented world pandemic and not by benchmarks laid out by educational fascists. Moms for Liberty will try to gutter school district of anything and anyone who stands for equity using propaganda to draw, to draw in those who have held leadership positions in our county. Names that include, that names that appear in the Moms for Liberty Orange County Facebook group include people who have held leadership positions in our county, like former school board member Michael Hood and people who still hold power, like current North Carolina Supreme Court Associate Justice Trey Allen. Until last week, even NPR's Catherine Braun was also in the Facebook group. We are blessed to have such a bold and excellent superintendent here in OCS. Thank you, Dr. Felder, for your leadership and I hope the board continues to recognize you for your excellence.
Thank you.
Hillary Mackenzie is up next.
In 2019, when Will Atherton first became Chair of the Board, four men unseated a black woman three meetings before her term as chair was over. The four people who voted to remove the board's black leadership out of turn were Will Atherton, Board Member Richmond's brother-in-law Tony McKnight, Board Member Hauser's close friend Matt Roberts, and Vice Chair Purcell's friend and former colleague Dr. Stephen Halkeotis, who now attends these meetings to make sure the replacement team continues to vote as he directs them. Ms. Purcell and Mr. Richmond, you were, you were endorsed by Moms for Liberty in the last election and to my knowledge, neither of you denounced the organization or the endorsement. So I want to ask Mr. Richmond, which I'll do by email now, why Moms for Liberty feels comfortable endorsing him? Why do they think he will work to, do they think that he will work to oust our equity-focused superintendent? Will he vote to ban books? I've heard him say that he wants to unite the county, so I want to ask him how he's doing that with his votes here. We're still waiting to see evidence of this promise. Ms. Purcell, you said to me in a forum in this very room that you feel like one of the biggest issues with race in Orange County Schools is black students saying racial slurs to other black students. And that LGBTQ-affirming books should be kept in counselors' offices so that kids can get the help they need when they want to access these books. It's very clear why Moms for Liberty cheers you on, but our LGBTQ students don't need help, they need allies. Our students need board members who understand the nuances of racism, who understand that racism rarely looks like Proud Boys and Klan members. The way that I have seen racism show up in this boardroom is the, is the board taking continual direction from white retired administrators who upheld disparities in this district for decades. It's a board taking nine months to make a decision about banning hate symbols from the dress code. It's board members believing that black students are responsible for the race issues in this county? It looks like a majority white board actively undermining a black superintendent, all the while telling everyone they're pro-equity, pro-diversity, and frankly, probably believing that they are. Is present when a board hires someone to close achievement and opportunity gaps, but think they know more than the superintendent, despite her career of success in doing so? In addition to data from her tenure here, which demonstrates student outcomes are moving in the right direction? It's the story of a board who's working hard to backpedal progress because it threatens the legacy and ego of one man. Members of this board, please ask yourself what you're doing to support the leadership of this district at a time when our children need and deserve consistency. Our students are relying on the expertise of Dr. Felder, our superintendent, who oversaw the highest percentage of schools meeting or exceeding growth of any district in North Carolina last year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Megan Darab. Am I saying that right? D-A-R-A-B. I'm sorry. Dare.
Linda Larkin and Nancy Greenkemper.
Good evening, school board members. Dr. Felder, uh, thank you for giving us this opportunity to address the audience tonight. I'm Megan Dareb. I am an OCS parent, uh, a member or a board member of Porch Hillsborough and porch coordinator for the OCS Porch Collaboration located at Orange Middle School.
And I'm just going to tell you quickly how this collaboration began, cause it's kind of a, a great story about how easy it is to make things happen when you have the right people in place. So, a couple of years ago, I was in a parking lot with Avis Barnes, lead social worker in our schools, fantastic human being. I said, you know, you've got some pantry bits happening, but we can streamline it for you. So she said, that's a great idea. We could make it a bigger program. And then I talked to Sarah Smiley about it and Sarah Smiley made things happen and we, um, then started talking with, uh, Dr. Felder and later Patrick Abley about institutionalizing this program so that every month, families in our community are getting the food they need. And if you've seen anything that we've written recently, it's all about, if you want to talk about equality, equality starts with food equality. So our goal is to provide families in need in our community with the same high-quality foods that everybody else gets to try and level the playing field. But bottom line, um, Dr. Felder, she came into the pantry one day, it was, you were a celebrity. Everybody stopped working and, uh, and greeted you and we welcome all of you to come into the pantry and see what we're doing here. We feed 150 families every month with fresh vegetables and, and non-perishables and food and, and Nancy's standing here, cause she started porch 20, 30 years ago.
In 2017. And, um, I, I had been an employee at Orange County Schools, a school psychologist. And so then I fell into doing porch and I left my job. Actually, I left my job and then I found another job. So it's really expanded over the years. This pantry at the school is just fantastic. And, um, actually these two people were, brought that on, so.
Uh, but we wanted to, before, as we planned for the 23, 24 school year, we just wanted to take this time to, um, thank all of the Orange County School team that has made it possible, from Ms. McBroom and, yeah, Ms., um, Ms. Avis Barnes, as Linda mentioned, uh, Ms. Bell Williams for allowing us to come into her school over and over again and putting up with us, um, for the team in her school, the, the teachers that we have to ask questions or the custodial staff when we break, and break something. But, um, anyhow, yes. We're done, but I just wanted to thank every, we wanted to take this time just to thank everybody and the teamwork and what we're doing for our community. So, little over, but thank you.
Thank you. Up next is Katie Harper.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I wanted to say a public thank you to my kids' teachers, not just this year, it can make me cry, but for the five and a half years our family has been in OCS. My kids' teachers have been engaging and kind, they've been committed to their students, they've been consummate professionals. This year, both kids have been lucky to have teachers who are nationally board certified. It's hard to put into words how good these teachers are at what they do. In the future, I hope this board will do whatever you can to support teachers pursuing national board certification. Please reimburse every part of the process that you can find funds for. I also wanted to thank my school's administration for everything they do day in and day out to support teachers, students and families. School leaders have made this year of transitions feel smooth, seamless and student-focused. I want to thank Dr. Felder and her team for the changes they've made in recent years and how reading is taught in our district. Dr. Felder's expertise in early literacy is invaluable to Orange County Schools. I hope- I hope, Dr. Felder, that you will choose to lead our district for years and years to come. I am so appreciative of all you do in service to children in our district. Thank you to the board for your service. Please protect the work that our community has done to make our schools more inclusive. And please stay focused on how to ensure that every student, not just some students, receive an excellent education in our schools. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Felder, board, and administrators. Tonight, I come before you as a concerned citizen of the community, but more importantly, as a concerned parent of the Southern Orange County District. About a week ago, I was informed that we may be at risk of losing one of the great leaders I, we have entrusted to lead the educators who care for our children on a daily basis. As a citizen of Orange County and as a native of Chapel Hill, as a proud alumni of Chapel Hill High School, I strongly believe in the importance of great leadership. Dr. Monique Felder is one of the greatest in my time. In my experience as a parent of children in the Orange County School District, two, to be exact, in, in working with Dr. Felder to address pertinent issues within our schools, I can honestly say, she not only listens, but she investigates, she follows up. And whether the, the favor, the outcome is in my favor or not, I appreciate that. It is most important, and that is the epitome of strong leadership. It is more than I can say for many of the leaders in our district. Tonight, I stand, we stand, in unity and in light of this leadership, this black leadership. Dr. Felder is not only a valued leader, but a type of mom in our community. Dr. Felder should not only be supported because she's black, but because she's good. Thank you.
Thank you, board, Dr. Felder, for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. I have two things that I really want to address. First of all, in December, Dr. Felder attended an NAACP meeting for the Northern Orange Branch. Several of you are members of that branch. Unfortunately, I don't believe I saw you at that meeting. She came and she explained the strategic plan for the, for the district. And the plan is pretty incredible. It's thorough, it makes sense, she explained it in a way that all of our members could understand. And the appreciation was so deep for her taking the time to do that on a Sunday afternoon and to engage some of the oldest members of our community, as well as many parents. So I really appreciated that. But more than her explaining the strategic plan, she hung out after the meeting and, and spent time with our community members on a personal level. And I don't know of any other leaders in this community that would do that. And I think that it just showed an incredible side of her, that not only is she willing to do her job, she's willing to go above and beyond for the community. And that is something that I personally really value in a leader. The second thing that I want to address is the last board meeting that I attended. During that meeting, you all passed the equity plan, and I want to applaud you for doing that. I think the decision was unanimous, and I think that that shows a tremendous commitment to equity from you all. During that same meeting, however, four of you voted against an improvement plan from one of our middle schools. And part of what you said about that was that you didn't feel like there was a concrete plan for that middle school to cover the staff positions that were missing. This was the second time that that plan had been presented to you. And that plan had been assisted with the central office, and you voted not to accept it. I think that that was very disrespectful to the central office, and the result was us losing yet another valuable staff member in Orange County. So thank you for listening.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I wanted to start by saying thank you, Dr. Felder, and thank you, Ms. Hatcher, for the way that you've been engaging with the Gravely Hill Middle School parents over the past days and weeks as the search for a replacement for Dr. Gwen Rolak continues. The community feels a lot of uncertainty and a lot of grief at the loss of Dr. Rolak, and we appreciate you. Thank you. The rest of my comments will be reading from Valerie Erlich, who couldn't be here tonight. She is an Orange County resident, parent of an OCS student, and member of the Equity Task Force. Less than two weeks ago, National Public Radio aired a story investigating the impact of Moms for Liberty on local school board elections nationwide. They focused on Florida and Minnesota, but they could have focused here. In the last school board election, an active local chapter of Moms for Liberty organized candidate forums and endorsed four candidates, two of whom won their elections on the board, Ms. Purcell and Mr. Richmond. What I found most intriguing about the NPR story was the examination of the endgame for these groups. The investigators found that while sounding the alarms about books and critical race theory, these groups, with the support of national backing, were also quietly removing or simply not renewing superintendents. It led me to wonder if a similar goal is unfolding in our community. The timing of the story was particularly relevant, as we see outrageous attacks on our neighboring Chapel Hill Harbor School's superintendent. We often like to think that such things wouldn't happen here in this progressive part of the state, but will we look back in a year and a half and connect the dots to our own similar story? I don't know, but here is what we do know. This district exhibited bravery in adopting policy that solidified an Equity Task Force. It exhibited bravery to be one of the first in the state to adopt a gender support policy that other districts have since modeled. It exhibited bravery when hiring a black female superintendent to serve our community when a large Confederate flag still flies less than a mile away from this meeting room. We also know that superintendent turnover is rapidly increasing nationwide disproportionately for women, and it is costly. Moreover, the institutional history, relationships, and knowledge departing superintendents take with them is irreplaceable. If Moms for Liberty is angling for removal of our superintendent, as posts and public groups on social media would suggest, I encourage the board to consider the extent to which you are privileging the voices of those who do not represent the broader community. I don't know if this is the endgame, perhaps it isn't. Regardless, I would ask the board to be brave, as you consider the incredible power you have to make decisions for our entire beautiful, diverse, growing community, decisions that can increase equity on issues big and small.
All right. Thanks, everyone, for coming out and speaking. We always enjoy comments and feedback. That is the end of the public comment. We now have our consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right. Next up on the agenda for discussion and action is approval for funding for Orange County Schools' facility upgrades.
Good evening, Chair Atherton, members of the board, Dr. Felder, Superintendent. We have a couple items this evening related to capital funding within our schools. You have an extensive amount of information in your packet this evening, and just wanted to highlight the scope of work for this project. In 2016, we had approximately $14.5 million in bond funding allocated for a classroom addition at Cedar Ridge High School. That project is completed, and was completed just under $13 million. We still have approximately $460,000 dedicated to the school site for the building of the agricultural barn or CTE expansion outdoor classroom, and we're recommending that we move $1,048,000 that's remaining, excuse me, $1,078,476 that's remaining in that project line item would be subject to the Board of County Commissioners' approval to complete facility upgrades at Orange High School. The primary project is identified as the restroom facility upgrades that we discussed in your last meeting. Are there questions and comments about the request this evening?
Any questions from the board?
I have none.
I do have one question. Given the concerns with the ban room, have we done any estimates or review on removing the risers from that area?
We have done some preliminary, I'll talk more about that in the next item, which will require architectural and structural review.
Okay, okay, I'll hold till then.
But if there is money left over from this project, once we complete the restrooms, that's a project that we would utilize funds for.
And I think the other thing to highlight, besides the restrooms, and this is, it doesn't explicitly list this, is the restrooms that are in the fieldhouse and the sports area, those are already being addressed.
That's an ongoing project at this time, that's correct. This is, what we're talking about with this project is indoor restroom facilities, and then also looking to expand, add additional restrooms on the campus for indoor use.
That's fantastic.
Well, just, we actually approved this project a couple, about a month or so ago, am I correct? Is it the same project?
We approved the moving forward, and so now you're getting the moving forward pieces, which includes the design contract, moving of the money, then we have the design contract, and then we'll go ahead and start the formal bidding process. It'll take about six months for us to get the designs and get approval for the formal bids in the project to start. We will have to require DPI clearance, there's a few steps still to go, but we'll keep everyone informed as we move along. It's hard to do a project without the funding, so we want to make sure we've got this money tied to this project.
All right, if there are no other questions, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you.
All right, so the next item on the agenda is Corley Redfoot and Associates. This is a design services contract addendum. Last month, we brought a number of services before the board with architectural and engineering following an RFQ request for qualifications this fall. We had several other projects that we identified that we would like to complete, and so this evening, we're asking for a contract addendum in the amount of $391,000, which will include architectural design and facility review for structural review of the cultural arts area at Orange High School and the Orange High School restrooms, the project we just mentioned. So with the design of the cultural arts wing, there's a slab movement issue, we have some door issues on that end of the wing. And then with the risers, our understanding is they're concrete and they are tied to the slab, which is part of the structural design, we believe, from the original building. And so we just can't go in and remove that until we have a structural analysis completed that will tell us, one, you know, structurally, how it was designed and tied in, is it part of an anchor system to that, or is it simply just something that was laid on top of the existing slab? From that, we'll be able to decide the projects to move forward into what direction would best be served by removing, relocating, expanding, et cetera. So it's really hard to tell exactly what we can do at this point in time until we have that review and analysis completed. And like I said, there's other things going on in that area of the building, so this is important for us to go ahead and look at that wing of the building. And we'll say Mr. Nick Mense is here as well, and he may have additional comments he would like to add on that. The second project was the Orange Middle School Media Center. Several years ago, prior to the pandemic, we started renovating media centers, and we just obviously stopped with the pandemic, and so Orange Middle School was next on the list. And so we will need additional services to assist us with that. There's quite a few number of doors and entries ways that we want to redesign on that school, and we certainly have to make sure it meets life safety, egress, and code compliance. And then the other project we had talked about was looking at the AL Standback and Partnership Campus for expansion of additional future facilities there, or the corporate drive site. And so these are the services with Corley Redfoot allows them to do the site surveys and investigations and review for designing those projects. And so, Nick, do you have any, you want to add anything on the cultural arts in this lab?
Yeah, I do. As far as the cultural arts building goes, there is a corner of the cultural arts building that provides exit for the ban room itself. Over years, that was built on a section of, of a fill, and that fill has settled and caused that corner of the building to drop. We've already done a door replacement in that area and had repairs, and we will be headed towards needing to do that again. And we also have done some preliminary investigation on the foundations and the footings for the ban room building. The front wall of the ban room, which faces the front driveway, the footing for that is actually higher than the floor where the conductor would actually stand. So there are some concerns with how we'll be able to navigate that elevation of that footing in relation to the main floor of the ban room. It'll create, it'll take some real creative to, creativity to support that exterior wall, just like Patrick addressed. So, we do know that it is higher, we just have to determine how that could be handled.
Eric.
Go ahead. Thank you. I'm just curious about timing in light of the concerns about safety. It seems like we'll definitely need that addressed, the marching band season starts in the summer. And so I'm imagining a project like this is longer in scope than six months, so I assume operations will address the concerns.
Could very well. We met with the architect on Friday and just expressed, we laid out priorities of all these projects that we've presented last month and this month, and we have this designated as high priority and, and actually urgent to make sure that we can go ahead and get the reviews completed so that we can start the process for any remediations and what the next steps would be.
Thank you.
And this is just a thought. I know that there are risers also in the music room at Orange High School. Are those being looked at as well as coming out, or are they ADA compliant?
So the way we wrote the contract was to look to cultural arts wing, and so anything in those areas that are a concern, we will address and look at as part of this process. Those have not been brought to our attention as a concern. What was raised as a concern was accessibility and certainly understanding, you know, students having to traverse risers and making sure that if there were any ADA codes or any compliance, and just functionality, certainly understanding, trying to conduct, you know, instruments and trying to have students placed in the correct locations. That could be very difficult, even if we met ADA requirements. You know, we want students to be in the appropriate location, so did not know about some of the other information that was mentioned this evening, and so we'll be reviewing that as well. But yes, we certainly know there's an urgency to address that. As Nick said, once the team went over, when the concern was raised and started looking at other structural issues, then we knew we had a bigger concern on our hands, and it was more than just trying to remove one item in that wing of the building.
Thank you.
But we will certainly review while we're there.
Bonnie.
Dr. Felder has been visiting our schools, I think one of the speakers even mentioned it, and getting some important facilities upgrades from our schools, and some, some actually affect the safety of the schools. And I was curious how those requests are getting incorporated. I don't know if it's here or in the capital plan, but how do they get on the list? How do they get prioritized? And then how do we feed back to the schools? And then how do we feed back to the schools and let them know what we're doing?
So, thank you. A couple different ways. One is we have direct conversations with our principals, both with onsite meetings, site visits. This year, we specifically also gave them a forum in a format to provide like a thirty-day window to submit any prioritized capital projects for us to review. We always start with the life safety systems. We look at things that are end-of-life, things that certainly have identified in facility reports, maintenance reports, things that are issues on the campus. We also look at planned upgrades and how can we improve the spaces within those upgrades. And so there is a forum for input with that. The second piece of that is understanding with this year, what was already on the books. I totaled up just a little while ago, and so we gave every principal backed, looking at a master listing of CIP projects that still haven't been completed to date. And so every school principal has a listing of projects and the appropriate or amount of cost on those projects that to be completed. And so that helps them understand that, yes, there's emergent needs. Some of those needs fall under the maintenance department. Some of our safety and security needs, we address through our safety and security funding. We don't typically talk in the open public about those, but we do address those. We do have money, and every year we set aside money. And in fact, this board, even prior to having set aside monies with the bond, did a special allocation. When I first came into the district several years ago, several hundred thousand dollars devoted directly for safety. So every year, there is money devoted to safety. So smaller items, whether it's access controls, blinds in classrooms, those projects are completed through maintenance work orders, or if it's identified during lockdown drills or identified by our SROs or other individuals, they raise those concerns either to the director of maintenance or to our director of security, and then we make sure those projects get completed. If it's a project that's beyond the scope of a one-time ask, or it looks like it's going to exceed, you know, more than fifty thousand dollars, then obviously we have to start looking at a longer-range CIP budget item and tagging it as an individual project versus just a small project we can do with our allocated resource. So we have two avenues that we can cover. We can cover it through our normal maintenance processes, or we can cover it under our larger projects, which is what you see under the CIP plan.
Can I just clarify? So just to, so these meetings happened, the request came through, you've given the principals a list of what you're planning to do. So you're asking the principals now to add those things to the list? So the list, the school has to now formally ask for those, the things that they asked for in the meeting? Is that what you're saying?
No, the larger-scale projects, we formulate as part of the superintendent's, as part of our capital plan that we bring to you, which is the list you'll have later on this evening. The smaller projects, the smaller items, principals request those, and then we either do those or complete those through the maintenance process, because if it's something that's broke, needs repairs, needs fixed, or if it's an addition planned item. If it's a small project, we take care of it through those routes. If it's a larger project and we don't have the funding identified for that, then we're going to add it to the capital list so that we bring it before you.
Thank you.
But what we, what we've really tried to do is be more transparent in the process so that folks understand there's an avenue, and even our staff members, you know, understanding part of the process that maintenance has been going through is evaluating maintenance work order systems. So staff members get a status update, and they know, you know, something that's not working or something that needs to be addressed. Where are we with that? Is it due to, you know, we just can't fix the item? Are we waiting on stock? Are we waiting on supplies? Or are we waiting on like this? You know, these processes that we have to do for the larger processes, which is, you know, incorporate and then based on the funding and the process, we bring it before you. We also go through bid processes, and so those projects do take a little bit longer to get completed.
Okay, thank you.
Just one comment from me. Given what we've heard tonight about the concerns with the three hundred pound equipment and moving that around, if we're not able to address it, I would like to have the board have an update on an interim plan so we don't have kids that are having to do that and put them in some kind of risk. All right, any other questions?
Oh, this is a voting item.
Yes. Any other questions?
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was gonna make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. All right. Next, we have our working session, and I believe it's the draft plans for the 2023 summer school program.
Well, good evening, President Atherton, Vice President Ms. Purcell, board members, and Dr. Felder, Superintendent. Ms. Wilson and I are very pleased to bring to you and share with you an update on the summer scholars for 2023. If you recall, back in September, we shared the outcome and success in some, not only quantitative data, but some qualitative data of our summer programs of the summer of 2022. One of the recommendations, or the recommendations coming from that presentation, was to start to look at a start, stop, and continue protocol, which looks at what worked, what we need to tweak, and what we want to continue with, to begin planning earlier, and to continue to look at the impact of the summer scholar program on our student performance throughout the year. So I'm pleased to bring to you an update on the summer scholars program. This is sort of part one of our summer programs update for you. Next month, we will share with you additional summer programs offering. This evening, we're going to look at the Read to Achieve program and summer scholars.
All right, good evening. I'm happy to share the beginning kind of plans with you. So before we talk about what we might look at for this year, we just want to take a moment to look at kind of historically, what have we done and some of the why behind that. As you know, RTA camp is legislatively bound to some restrictions with the schedule, the number of hours, and the students that must be served in that program. So seventy-two hours of literacy instruction, so it's not just instruction, it has to be direct literacy instruction, must be provided to at minimum second and third graders. Senate Bill 387 does allow us the opportunity to extend that program to more students, and it even suggests in the bill to consider first grade or earlier. We're also required in that program to provide pre and post-assessment data that also has to be submitted to DPI along with the attendance in the program, and there are coding that has to happen in Power School now for students that are participating in summer programming, both for RTA as well as other summer programs that we offer through summer scholars. Summer scholars does not have the hour requirements and the schedule requirements of RTA, and in the past, we have historically served different groups of students with various programs outside of RTA. Last year, we had eight hundred students who were invited to attend RTA camp, and we had about half of them, four hundred, who attended. Last year with summer scholars, we invited about seven hundred students, and two hundred and fifty people said that they would come, but only about seventy percent of those actually attended based on their attendance each day. Additionally, we saw that participation in the grades four through eight, as just noted in that data, was lower, and it was much more challenging to get the students to bring back the forms, and a lot of hours went into calling and having to make those appeals with families to get their students registered, and then once we got them registered, to actually get them to come to camp, and if they did attend, to attend consistently. Research does show that earlier intervention is more impactful than trying to intervene later on in the schooling life. And many questions that we've gotten around planning for summer programming is, you know, well, what did our data look like? How many kids do we think are going to qualify this year? So here, I've provided for you the beginning of year data. Please note that the beginning of year data, especially kindergarten, can be very misleading, and we are currently in the middle-of-the-year assessment window. Currently, we have about seventy-eight, as of about eleven o'clock today, we have seventy-eight percent of our middle-of-the-year assessments completed, and I would estimate roughly around seven hundred students qualifying for Read to Achieve camp. One change that we are proposing this year that I'm excited about is that we are going to offer eligibility based on MOY, period. We are not going to pull back eligibility if a student demonstrates proficiency between MOY and EOI, because what we know is that a student who demonstrates proficiency at the EOI window oftentimes has not truly solidified those skills. They are still solidifying them, and extra practice being offered to them would be beneficial in maintaining that growth through BOY of the following year. So all family letters will go out the end of February. We already have those in the works with our Power School manager. Joy has been fantastic at helping us get the system to work for us and generating those letters, and we hope that our families are excited to have earlier notification so that they can plan for the summer, and we also hope that that impacts our enrollment. The other camp that we will talk more about later, but we wanted to put on your radar, is recognizing that we need to do some sort of middle school math support that will be housed at Gravely Hill this summer, and eligibility for that will be determined on multiple data sources that we listed here for you, in addition to teacher recommendations. The grade levels that we hope to serve, of course, we have to serve second and third graders as part of Read to Achieve. That's legislatively bound, but we would like to think about serving K1 with our summer scholars program, and even considering if there is additional spots for us to bring in some rising kindergartners, focusing first on our Title I schools and our current pre-K classrooms, and we would model that after the kindergarten readiness program that was previously run in this district with success at New Hope Elementary School. The dates and hours of the camps are here, listed for you, so there will be like a summer session one and summer session two. Hillsborough Elementary School would be the summer session one. There will be some other programs offered at the high school level and CTE programs that we'll talk more about later, but they would coincide with these dates. You can note here, with those dates, Hillsborough will get thirteen days of instruction. In order to meet that seventy-two hours of literacy instruction, we need their day to be thirty minutes longer than the traditional schedule, because they have two more days. So we have calculated the hours, pulling out transitions, recess, lunch, and we can provide all of the literacy instruction and run a very similar schedule to what we offered last year at Hillsborough Elementary. And then high school credit recovery is listed, but I think more information will come at the next meeting around those. In terms of the summer programming that's utilized in summer scholars and RTA focusing on our early learners, K through three, we've just listed for you again some of the programs that we utilize for phonics, phonemic awareness, small group instruction, language comprehension, ensuring that we're building all of the facets of literacy, as well as providing opportunities for our students to have STEM, enrichment, engage in their speaking and listening standards as well.
Turn it back over to you. Just some final information I want to share with you. The summer scholars will be housed at Pathways and New Hope Elementary Schools. Transportation, lunch, and breakfast, as well as after-care programs will be provided, and you will note here, we've identified the PAVE for certified, classified, as well as the site facilitators. As noted, we will come back next month and provide you an update on the other summer opportunities and programs that we plan to provide for our students. That concludes our update. We'll pause for any questions.
Carrie?
Thank you so much. This is really great information. I remember this time last year, our educators were really exhausted, and we had to, or y'all had to plan on scaling back the summer programs, because people just were really exhausted teaching through the pandemic and not as many people wanted to teach in the summer programs. And I'm just curious about the numbers, and I know, I know how persistent you are, Ms. Wilson, so I know, no, no stone is going unturned, but I'm curious, are we seeing, if I heard you right, there were, let's see, about seven hundred qualifying at this point for Read to Achieve, and last year, eight hundred were invited. Is that an indication that we're making some gains?
So as I mentioned, only seventy-eight percent of our data is in. Currently, I have six hundred and twenty students who are eligible as of eleven o'clock today. I, looking at the percentage that's not in, and kind of the grade levels and the schools where those are, and kind of digging into that a little bit, my rough estimate is around seven hundred students will be eligible. Currently, we have six hundred and twenty based on seventy-eight percent completion of assessments.
Thank you.
And in terms of the staffing, we did look at the dates to try to match that up with the preference that staff indicated based on last year. They indicated that they liked having a break at the end of the school year, they kind of got to recharge their batteries, they can come in and teach. It's only three weeks, five days a week, and then they have another break before they come back for the school year. So that was staff preference, and we hope that that will help us in leveraging, getting our most qualified teachers to be a part of this, and those that are really interested in helping our students succeed this summer.
In addition, additionally, the schedule for the summer scholars and Read to Achieve, the July tenth through the twenty-eighth, that three-week window will not have any breaks for students. That was the one thing that we also saw. Whenever we had holiday break or any other time, the attendance was impacted, so it's uninterrupted period of time.
There are also teaching bonus, teacher bonuses for teachers that have demonstrated exceptional growth, exceeding growth via EVOs. There are bonuses that are attached to that for them if they teach in summer programming, and then for any teachers who teach in third grade and their students demonstrate proficiency as a result of the camp, there's also an additional bonus for them per child.
Other questions? Bonnie?
I first want to thank you. It's exciting that we're so, we're so far ahead and that you're using the mid-year assessments to decide who's eligible, so thank you so much for that. And of course, I think you know that I'm really excited that we're looking at the readiness camp as a, as a basis for some of this work. We have kids, and especially our most vulnerable kids are pretty far behind. There's lots of them. And so I wonder about grades four and five. I wonder about, you know, should we really take, and also even three weeks, if that's enough? So just curious, are we looking at this big enough? And the earlier we can know, you know, then the earlier we can start begging for money for it, so just.
So you hit the nail on the head with that one. So based on the funding that we have available from multiple sources, we can serve about six hundred students comfortably. Seven hundred is going to be really tight, and we have met with Rhonda and her team to try to make sure that we are squeezing every bit of that that we can, and trying to make decisions, you know, scaling back the things that we can scale back on so that we can expand for more students. You know, even the ratio, right? Last summer, we ran at one to twelve. This summer, we're going to come out of the gate with at least one to fifteen, just so we can have more students and still be able to get, you know, serve at least six hundred students in our budget.
Let me ask that question differently. You know, the commissioners pressure us all the time for more accountability, and so, and we can only do so much with the money we have. And if we can go to them and And if we can go to them and say, we have enough money to serve 700 students, use your number, but we really would like to serve 2,000, we're going to need this much more money from you to do that. Is it possible, I mean, let's make this a perfect world, right? We're just, right? Is it possible to put something like that together for us?
I think we all want to say yes, right? And going back to your point, I think we also have to have the staffing, we have to have the bus drivers, our staff have to be able to lift it. And then also, thinking about Mr. Abalay's team, also having schools ready to reopen. And that was one of the reasons that we also looked at three weeks being really intensive. It's only one day less than what we offer when we did it four days, four weeks. So.
The other part too, and if I can, can echo what Ms. Wilson said with regard to the other factors that we have to consider whenever we're looking at programs. And ideally, we would love to, to be able to serve all who qualify. One of the things that we looked at was attendance of our upper grade students and of the students who qualified, the percent of students that actually attended also impacts. We are not closed on looking at upper grades and including that, the students in the summer programs. So we, we had to make some hard decisions in, in targeting a smaller number and, and also looking at where we're going to try to get more bang for our, for our dollars. And, and putting the supports at the early ages, early stages. We saw higher attendance, greater outcomes. And if indeed you get that windfall of money, yes, indeed, we will go back and see how we can, can use it and add additional students. Thank you.
Other questions?
So I have one clarity question. So, so last year, the way it worked is a family would receive a letter that says, you may qualify for this. And then, like you said, after the end of grade test, then they would get, oh, you are qualified. And then they had to make a decision at, at point. So they had two kind of notifications, one that was a maybe, maybe not, and then the one that says you are. I just want to confirm, the way I read this, is we are saying, based on the middle of the year, you are, not a you may be.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There will be, one letter is like, congratulations, you've been selected, you're eligible to go, right, for Summer Scholars and RTA Camp. We're so excited that you want to be a part of this. Like, that's kind of the tone of the letters that we send. And we'll go ahead and give parents the specifics, the dates, the times, the transportation, breakfast, lunch. They'll respond back to us. Yes, my child plans to attend. I need transportation. I need after-school care. All of that will be part of that letter. And then, once we get closer to the end of the year, we will ensure that they remember that this opportunity exists for their student. And then we will also double check that there wasn't a student who was green at MOY or not demonstrating that they're not going to be reading proficient that comes up, you know, at risk at EOI. We will also make sure that those students get looped in if we have that occur, which is not usually very often. But we will check for that.
Fantastic. And I'm also excited to hear about the potential for the readiness for K. I know there's been a lot of success around that and having that expanded and getting the opportunity to lots of incoming kids, I think is a great way to give those kids that opportunity before they get into the school setting.
We are hopeful that, you know, we will have the, the funds available to make that happen and the spots available. Yeah.
So just for clarity, you should come to us with what the funds are and let us ask for the funds from the county commissioners. We should not be limiting ourselves to what we currently have. We, we're here to fight, and so is the community. So please let us know.
Once we have eligibility, we can come back with that information.
Excellent. Thank you.
Well, can I add something to that? You know, we're, our budget cycle happens at the end of the year, so we don't know until June what we're actually getting, which is too late. So the earlier you can give us, and doesn't have to be, we're not looking for a detailed number. We're looking for if we have 700 students, it'll cost this. If we have 1,000, it'll cost this, just rough numbers. You know, you said also the resource constraints, which has me a little concerned, but yes, if you can come back to us. So, because we're, we could, in our earlier meetings with the commissioners, we could start to raise the topic.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have the capital investment. Capital improvement or capital investment plan, CIP.
All right. So thank you. I'm back again. We do reference our capital investment plan as the CIP. I do want to recognize Nick Mensey, Director of Maintenance, Hank McKee, Assistant Director of Maintenance, and Patrick Florence, our Director of Capital and Construction Projects here this evening, as we formulate and bring before you our capital investment plan. Just for the general public and knowledge, we develop a 10-year capital plan. Year one of the plan is the plan that's funded annually by the Board of County Commissioners. This is the first step in the process. Typically, December, January timeframe, we bring the capital investment plan before the Board of Education. The Board of Education, once finalized after our next meeting or so, or when approved by the Board, we will submit that to the Board of County Commissioners. They will work on the funding process for that and the approval of that while they're working on the other budgets for the school district. And then, we actually do not or would not receive the funding for fiscal year 24, which are the projects we're reviewing this evening, until July 1. And so there is a little bit of a timeframe between us presenting the projects and we receive funding. There are standard funding formulas from several different pots that the county uses, primarily, those are debt-financed projects. And so those, you, we will refer to those within the plans. We also have recurring capital. Article 46 sales tax, which we use primarily for technology. And then we do receive lottery funds from the state through the Board of County Commissioners. And so all of those funding sources consist of our capital investment plan. You heard me speak previously about our bond funds. And so we do have carryover projects from either previous CIP funding that has taken place in the district or through bond funding or, or other supplemental funding. The county commissioners gave a three-year supplemental deferred maintenance funding of $12 million. A couple of years ago, we're using those funds for identified projects, but also in reserves as we complete the bond initiatives, which primarily consisted of the large project I talked about earlier, the classroom addition at Cedar Ridge High School. Over $10 million was spent of bond funds on the mechanical system upgrades at Orange High School. And then there's an additional $15 million in mechanical systems that we're currently working on, roof projects and other projects in the bond funds. And so before you this evening is our fiscal year 24 facilities request that would go to the county commissioners for new money for fiscal year 24. As mentioned earlier, we utilize our previous facility assessment from 2013, our Safe Havens, which was a safety audit that was conducted, a roof assessment that was conducted in 2016. And then the Board of County Commissioners has authorized, an RFP was completed, a comprehensive facility assessment of school buildings that includes Orange County Schools and the Chapel Hill Carpet City Schools. They are in the process of reviewing and analyzing those bids for the facility assessment. And so at some point in time, we will get back an updated facility assessment, and that would be included in the long-range facility plans, starting years two through year 10. And so at this point in time, we're just presenting again this evening, year one, waiting on the additional facility assessment. And then we will provide you additional updated information for years two through 10 that are all unfunded. Again, it just, it's funded each year annually. We do understand, last week, the Board of County Commissioners, in an amendment and motion, passed an additional $12 million to be identified for capital. And we're still waiting the actual amount that we would receive. And that would be applied to this year's capital improvement. So projects that may have been unfunded, I will talk about a gap that we're seeing. Next year, we could apply those funds for upcoming projects as well, but it's non-recurring money, and that was due to sales tax projections, I believe. So I'm looking over at the finance officer, because she'll help keep me on track with that one. All right. So projects, again, won't go over all the projects. You have a packet of materials. You can see the projects that we're going to be focusing on in the fiscal year 24 funding. Restrooms, as we mentioned, intercom systems, roofs, mechanical systems, classroom improvements. We have two large projects that are continuing at Central Elementary School and at Efflin Cheeks Global Elementary School. Site surveys, everything from looking at structural issues and deficiencies to expansions or renovations, paving projects, and a priority on playgrounds. So those are just some of the general areas we'll be focusing on this year. I want to think about capital and, as Capital 365, and know it's not the card that's in your wallet. We really, as you heard, the summer program struggle to complete projects, especially in older buildings. Large-scale capital projects is impossible to complete those projects in six weeks timeframe during the summer months. And so for the last couple of years, we have collectively, as an organization, scheduled and reviewed summer programming to coincide with capital renovations, to coincide with maintenance projects, to coincide with getting schools ready and prepared for opening for a new school year. We are busier in the summer just about than any point in the year, because right now, we're operating on a daily schedule of operations. In the summertime, we're doing all of those things. We're, we're helping and logistically working to coordinate summer programming while preparing for the next school year, while getting contractors in building, et cetera. We have to look at ways and identify ways to get projects done 365 days. Night work, weekend work, scheduling during off sessions or when school's out of session, utilizing swing space. That was a priority we talked about, with bringing mobile units into Efflin Cheeks in order to kickstart those projects, plus prepare for capacity needs. We'll do the same thing at Grady Brown. We've talked about that several years ago with the county commissioners. We do not have additional swing space in this district to move students to while buildings are being renovated. We have older buildings. Those buildings certainly have hazardous materials. Those buildings require individuals to be on the campus and lots of noise that takes place for some of these projects. And so it just becomes very difficult to do it, and that does contribute to the backlog. It's not an excuse, it's just a reality. So part of our project and our planning is addressing how we move forward as we receive capital dollars. But hear me say, it's never enough. We don't receive enough money to keep our aging facilities open and can keep them up to date to today's standards. And so you see a wide variety of projects. You see projects that are continuing, you see projects that need to be completed, but we'll always consider and, and move projects forward that are urgent or projects that need to be completed. I don't think we do a good enough job of talking about the projects you don't see, the things that are on the roofs or the things that are behind the closets. And so we need, we need to do a better job of that, of communicating to our schools, to our staff, to our, to our principals, and to our families about what work is taking place and what work is coming or is scheduled to be done on the school campuses. So when you look at the categories of projects, we've identified $2.956 million in new projects for next year, year one of the CIP. Our technology funding needs, we have at $1,024,136. And then we have some carryover projects that were scheduled for carryover funding or funding to utilize in the next fiscal year, and those total $2.652 million. If you add all three of those categories up, that's $6.641,674,000. We're scheduled to receive as of today, again, the whatever was passed or information that's forthcoming is not updated in our numbers that were submitted last week, we're scheduled to receive $3.159662. That leaves us a funding gap with what we have on paper today, a $3.48 million for our capital needs for next year. And that, the carryover projects, we had identified, New Hope Elementary School, Gravely Hill Middle School, we have just a small project at River Park and a small project at Orange Middle. Our roof projects carryover was $1.7 million. Safety upgrades, there is code compliance with fire doors and dampers. We had allocated $1.5 million, but we still have an additional, we believe, $500,000 in need. We talked about structural building repairs, those are carrying over. We do have an ALS wall that also needs an assessment that will be completed. And we talked earlier about the Orange High School cultural arts. So at this time this evening, I'm not proposing we cut anything from the list. We have a need identified of just over $6.6 million. I recommend that we continue to advocate for the identified need for next year and then await the facility study to identify the longer-term need. Again, the money we currently have on hand that we're utilizing the architects and engineers for, we're going to move forward and get those projects completed. And I want to advocate for an additional funding that we have, which is our local recurring capital we receive as part of the capital budget each year. And those recurring capital funds are used for unexpected repairs, things that were not a project identified, where we have something that breaks or a water heater goes out and we, we need to repair that. It covers all of our service contracts. It covers some of our painting projects, carpet projects, all of our athletic equipment, facility repairs, floor refinishings, and the gymnasium. There's just a whole host of items, buying ceiling tiles, light bulbs. All those things come out of our recurring capital funds. I will tell you, I've never seen a time with recurring capital funds that we have depleted our funds at this, to where we are at this point in a school year. We're over 90%, or right at 90% of our funds depleted in recurring capital. Everything costs more money. Every service contract, every supplies we buy, everything that we're utilizing or individuals we're calling to assist with repairs. And so I would continue to advocate that our recurring capital funds needs to be increased from the county as well. That's the information I had, comments I had prepared to share with you, questions or comments about individual projects or identified need for fiscal year 24.
Carrie?
Thank you, Mr. Abalay. Just a quick question. When you referenced the $3.5 million funding gap and that the county commissioners mentioned or identified an additional $12 million, is that split with Chapel Hill, where we usually get slightly less than half? Or is that?
So that has been, when they base it on ADM, we would receive somewhere in the 40 percentile range, but I believe that funding is going to get split threefold. There's some county funding that's coming out of that based on their amendment. There's also paying for the facility study out of that. And then we get to whatever that split might be. So at this point, we're still just waiting on what that number will be.
Thank you.
Anne?
I know one time you came and we, when we were talking about the trailers at Efflin. Have you determined how many trailers are going to need to go there, because you're going to be doing renovations as well as, as other things? So have you determined exactly how many?
We planned 10 mobile units at Efflin. That's what we're mobilizing for and we're writing the contract for, and what we plan to have all the furniture, furnishings. And that was a five-year plan, not knowing the future and knowing additional, excuse me, renovations that may come out of the facility study. You know, we felt like a five-year plan would work well on that campus, just with the extensive need that needs to happen. Plus, unlike some of our other campuses, we have the space for them and the service area with the utility sewer, all of the connections. It just, it lays itself out better for us to, to have the additional space there. You know, we, we would like to have mobile units at Central Elementary School for their project. We just don't have room really on that campus, as limited as we are with the space to be able to put mobile units yet. We're still looking, but at this time, we, we don't have a project there.
I know the ones that you had at Orange High School did not have bathrooms. Are these? I know the ones that you had at Orange High School did not have bathrooms. Are these going to have bathrooms?
There is a bathroom facility on these, and the way we've designed them is try to keep them all enclosed just for safety and not have individual mobile units, but keep them as a unit with a hallway and keep everything together on the campus. And that also helps us on running technology, running life safety systems, canopies, walkways, steps, all of those things that have to be code compliant if we had individual buildings. So this is designed as a, one mega unit that gets pieced together.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Bonnie?
Just building on Carrie's question, so after, you know, we don't know how much exactly that we're going to get from the county of 12 million, but does it, it sounds like it's pretty close to what you're proposing. You know, you're 3.4 million, 3.5 million dollars short. Looks like we might get 3.5 out of that, might, something close to that.
Correct. We don't know yet. And that's on fiscal year, that's on this current fiscal year's funding from the county, 2122. Now, as they look to the future, because again, that was based on their projections for the, for this year. I still think that they're reviewing and looking at what could they add to projections that will come in for the next fiscal year as well. So I think we don't know, you know, what was decided last week. Our understanding is, was based on the current fiscal year and they're still reviewing the next fiscal year if there's any additional capital allocations that can be made. And I don't know where that discussion is or at what point that will be discussed, or if that will come after the facility studies completed.
We haven't, that, that's not a part of this plan at all.
It is not. That was new information that came up last week that we were in a county meeting. We actually, we have been working to do a quarterly reconciliation with the county on capital, just to keep everyone on the same page and understand what projects were, were happening, where we are in the bidding process, because again, as the county is taking on debt financing of projects, we want to make sure we time things right, that they're not drawing down money prior to us being ready for the money to hit the books because you're paying on that debt. And so we, we've all been very busy and struggling through the pandemic, but we do have a great process, we feel, going forward with reconciliations on a quarterly basis with the county. And then like we did last week at our meeting, it also gives us an opportunity to talk about the projects we're doing. So, you know, we, we get beyond the narrative that we have some funding we're not using. We, we have plans for funding. It's getting the vehicles and getting the processes rolling again in order to get the work done.
Thanks.
But there's, there's a greater need than what we're funded for. That's been documented for several years now.
No question. Not close, right?
Not close.
Not close.
All right, other questions?
And this is just for information tonight.
Yeah, so thank you for presenting this and the background. Definitely supportive of going in with our full need versus what we think we may get allocated. I just had one question about the project around Efflin Cheeks. We know that they've had sewer issues in the past. Is there a current project on the books to look at how we address it more holistically versus as things pop up?
Yeah. So we, we've looked at multiple issues at EC, Efflin Cheeks. We have had CRA is planning exterior, looks at stormwater, which has been a big concern around the exterior of the building. We've talked about that at length. So that is in the process of being designed or studied. As far as the interior portion, that will fall under the second phase of Efflin Cheeks, which works through SUDS contract in conjunction with DTW Architecture out of Durham. Paul Young is the principal for there and Mr. Florence, myself, have met with him and we're continuing in discussions on how to make repairs to the classroom restrooms, which are the largest concern for that school. Not going into detail, some of the past piping was an odd configuration, needs to be updated.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you both.
Hence why we think we need mobile units on the campus for five years.
Get it right. Thank you. All right, next up, we have an update on the work of the family liaisons.
Chair Atherton, Vice Chair Purcell, Dr. Felder, members of the board, thank you for for having us come and present. This is the second part of a presentation that we began a couple of weeks ago, and I am very pleased to have Sandra Blefko, who is the esteemed family outreach coordinator and in many ways, an architect of a lot of what we're talking about. And you all know, because you've been there and helped, helped along the way. So you will have seen a lot of what we're going to talk about in your abstract, but there's one thing that's, that's kind of brand new, and that's the fact that our annual targets have been updated. We have a lot of new information from Dr. Sarfo surrounding the key performance indicators in our strategic plan, and it's kind of daunting. I'm just going to be honest with you. It was a little, it's a, got my coffee to keep going because we have a steep goal to double the engagement among our African-American, black families in the district and quadruple our engagement among our Latino and Hispanic families in the district. And given what we talked about a couple of weeks ago, it's a good thing that we have a lot of different angles on this problem, and we're going to talk a little bit about that tonight. So the family liaison team, the family liaison role, and the work that they do is what we're going to talk about tonight. And again, Sandra is going to share some stories, and we also have a couple testimonial videos that I think are going to be really exciting to share with you all. What we need you to take away from tonight's presentation is that interpreting and translating is in many ways part of the DNA of the role, except everywhere else it's done. Family liaisons, navigators, people who operate as a concierge or support, advocate, all the different words that you would use. They provide so many meaningful skills, and translation and interpretation are included among them, and we're going to be trying to tease out the priority among those as we look for the, how the liaison role is going to work in the future. So you're seeing here some of the slides that we presented earlier and had these a couple of weeks ago, and again, they're in your, in your abstract. But what we'd really like you to understand is this framework of helping families navigate and get over around, through, under, it doesn't matter how you get there. You have to get to the other side of a barrier. And so on the, on the left-hand side, you can see sort of the, the genesis of the role. Translators and interpreters. Case in point. So this began when there was a need perceived in our schools. And using language skills, first among our language teachers, then ESL teachers, then staff, you, you know the whole story. I don't have to rehearse it again. But translation and interpretation have been raised to a very high level in the understanding of the family liaison role. And as it has grown in the past few years, we really want to draw your attention to the right side of this, right? We're reading from left to right. Our family liaisons are becoming well-known for helping families navigate both the school and the district as a whole. They are connecting families, students and staff with resources. And again, I'm not going to read the slide, except to draw your attention to the bottom. They translate and interpret when necessary. And as you heard over the past few weeks and months, the number of newcomers continues to grow quickly. We've added from the, from 33 languages in our district to over 40 just this year alone. So things are changing almost as rapidly as we can keep track. I'm going to share with you some slides. Again, this is in the, the abstract that you have for reading on your own as well as after, after the meeting. So Sandra is our team leader. She is, in many ways, like I said, the architect and you know, a trailblazer for this program. Before I skip her slide though, this slide used to look different, and Sandra doesn't know this slide. She hasn't seen this one yet. She's not used to having schools under her name. So as you know, we've been doing some reconfiguration, and in this past year, we are in the hiring process to bring on our first liaison who is exercising just liaison skills for whom language skills will be optional and not their primary role. So Sandra has been filling in and doing work at Efflin Cheeks, River Park and Gravelly Hill. And that means that there's a little bit less time to do some of the other things, which we'll get into later. So Senia is one of our team members who does an amazing job. I'll share anecdotes about each of these folks as we go through. Ruth is doing, you can almost always catch Ruth Pizarro at Orange High School, except she has two other schools and stays very, very busy shuttling between them. And Donette is the newest member of the team who spends an awful lot of time at Cedar Ridge, which you would expect because there's a huge population of students there. And we also have students at Stan Mac and Partnership who need assistance as well. So these are some slides that, we're not going to dwell on these. These are slides that you would see if you were coming to an introductory presentation, which our schools need some assistance in learning how to use liaison time and help. Our families need assistance, and our community partners need assistance. The, the job of the family liaison role in all of its manifestations is to build relationships and to build capacity, to break down barriers and open pathways. So there's all, very often this question, what do we do? And that's a really long list. Only that one's even longer, right? So we tried to boil it down for you. What is working well when our family liaison role is at its highest? Promoting communication, first of all. Tracking translation, expediting translation and interpretation, but overwhelmingly making partnerships work. The number of ways that I can see Sandra's time pulled on her calendar boggles my mind. I try to get on her calendar, she tries to get on mine. Between seeing the Family Success Alliance, the Orange Partnership, and all the other different organizations that we're working with, it really is daunting to get on Sandra's calendar. And yet, this year we managed to bring back, I've highlighted the Orange County Literacy Council again, because even tonight, right? How many people are?
Well, tonight, no, because it wasn't a school line for the students, but yes.
That's right, they took a break.
Yes, yes. So the ESL adult classes are back at Orange County Schools, and we started with Efflin Cheeks. It's been a success. We have over 55 parents there have been learning English language in there, and soon we're going to start with New Hope Elementary.
In as early as March?
In, in March, yes, March the 2nd, yes.
So we're very excited because the schools have been supporting the program. Glad to see Ms. Parks here. And we know that Dr. Mayer is likewise eager to have these families in her building. So we just wanted to highlight that this partnership aspect of the role is one of the things that can easily get lost when we're doing the day-to-day. We have to have both. We have to have really good air support and really excellent support on the ground, and these work together. And the work continues, and Dr. Dreher was here, Lee Williams, the sec, that we're all out there growing the relationships that make this program work. But what's, if, if we're not careful, we're going to miss the day-to-day. As visionary and as exciting as the program is, the day-to-day really matters. And Sandra has been fastidious. I'm so proud to say that because this data is helping us understand where we really are and where we've been. This is part-year data, and again, this, this is probably, probably actually two, three weeks old, so the numbers continue to grow. But what, what I want you to see is the numbers tell a picture. Notice how variegated this pie chart is. We are in all the schools. The family liaisons are serving all the schools, but some clearly take precedence, and you can tell where they are. What kinds of requests are coming in? It's really interesting to note that an awful lot of verbal interpretation results come in as well as, you know, the translation, written translations mean a lot. We're going to talk about the case studies of a couple of different schools when we get to the end of the presentation to kind of talk about the path forward and what it might look like. Verbal interpretation, you know, parent-teacher conferences take an awful lot of the work. I mentioned Senia Merlalda, who's at Grady Brown and a couple of other schools, and one of the first ways that I got to know Senia was walking into the school and asking her, what's that stack of papers on your desk? And it was a list of between 75 and 100 names, all of whom she was about to start making phone calls, cold calls to set up parent-teacher conferences. All those families at one school needed assistance, and we're going to get a direct phone call from a liaison, not from the teacher, not from other, another staff at the school, but from a family liaison, creating connections, but also overcoming language and cultural barriers. That's a big deal going through. If any of you have done phone calling, I did telemarketing in college. 75 to 100 calls takes a long time, and especially when you're trying to build relationships. So it just really kind of impressed me what these, what, what our family liaisons are looking at when they start the day and then when they end the day. So contacting families for parent-teacher conferences, do you need help? About half of them actually needed help just get like navigating the process. That's really daunting for families. This is the part that Sandra, you should explain, you should explain this one. I, I find the data really haunting. Did you remember N is 365 on the slide before?
So yes.
300 or 365 responses.
So we have a formal form for our staff to submit any requests for translation or interpretation. And around 300, they are, you know, around the, the whole district. But this is the informal one. So every family liaison had to record whenever, when, every time they, they receive a call from the nurse, from the counselor, from the principal about anything. And we have more than double requests. They are informal. They, we do, they are not requested on the form. So we record about, yes. So most of that is to, and also our families call us and tell us we need to contact transportation, we need to contact the nurse, and we record all this information. And this is what this picture shows.
For every one request that comes in through the normal channel, like, hi, we can help you, right? Through the normal form that's been shared with everybody. There's one informal request from a family member and another informal request from the schools. So while we're busy tracking the data to try and understand, like, where can we, where can we be most effective? Only one-third of the data is actually coming at us through the normal channel, and the rest is just playing a, a big game of Tetris, catching what comes at us and trying to make it fit until we can get through the day to the next day, the next year, and so on. So I just wanted you to try to grasp that. If you, maybe that's what it's like when we all do our day jobs, but I don't think so. So it's really impressive how the family liaisons, as a crew, as a core, are doing something really pretty dramatic. I, I've obscured the names of the schools here, but again, I want you to see that there are some schools, yeah, that we don't, we're not picking on anybody. But I want you to kind of see that there are some real frequent flyers. We do an awful lot of work. And, and a lot, in a lot of schools, those requests come in informally, right? So it's just very interesting how we're trying to, we're trying to really work on and refine the process. Sandra and her team do an immense amount of transitioning. Notice how much of the work is in these brief interactions. And yet, when you start adding up those 30-minute interactions, one hour, two hours or more, Sandra, I'm, I'm pretty sure you've spent up to three hours in some of these meetings. Yeah. Talk about that for a minute.
When we had to mediate with families, when there are problems with discipline, when we had to use, do an emergency meeting with, with the families and the counselors. So yes, this can take up to two hours.
So I, I've been in those kinds of meetings as a parent. I've seen those kinds of meetings, you know, when, when there aren't other barriers. And so it's just very impressive what they do and how much they do as a member of the school team, which is one of the things that we continue to try and reinforce, is that each of these staffers, they are full-time staff members, supporting students and families and staff. They really are embedded and part of the school at Cedar Ridge, at Gravelly Hill, right, at Grady Brown. They are a valued member of the team, doing something that no one else can do. Ryan, are you going to, if, if I just push the button, will it go? So Mr. Miller is going to play a couple of videos for us, and I've, I've taken the liberty of including the text translation. The first one is in Spanish and the second is in English, but for clarity's sake, we want you to be able to understand what the families who experience the work of the liaisons, what they want to say back of their own accord. Thanks, Ryan. It'll take a second, by the way. I can actually talk for a couple of seconds because I know she, eventually she'll come around to the scenery. Don't worry.
Buenos dias. Soy la mamá de Alex y Moisés Cibarra. Ellos pertenecen a la high school de Orange. Solamente para agradecer por los asistentes familiares. Ya que por medio de ellos nos comunicamos hacia las escuelas, aclaramos dudas, nos investigan sobre reuniones, programas, etc. Pues para mí sí es de mucho beneficio que estén ellos. De mi parte pues agradecerle a la señorita Ruth, que es la que, con la que yo me comunico por medio de mensajes del WhatsApp o llamadas. Y me ha ayudado bastante, muchas gracias. Y pues a las personas que, que hacen este programa de, de poner asistentes familiares. Y pues a las personas que hacen este programa de poner asistentes familiares. Para nosotros como mamás hispanas es de mucho beneficio, ya que no se nos, algunas de nosotros se nos dificulta hablar el idioma del inglés. Entonces, se nos hace más difícil hablar directamente a la escuela porque a veces no hay personas que hablen en español. Entonces sí, la verdad, a mí me ha ayudado bastante mi asistente familiar. Pues solo agradecer a quienes hacen este programa y a la señorita Ruth. Muchas gracias y pues que continúen con este programa de asistentes familiares. Es todo, que tengan buen día, gracias.
So I have no doubt that we're going to continue the family liaison program. The question is, how will it function best? And so we heard from a, from a mother who speaks Spanish. And again, sort of like, that's our stereotypical vision of what the family liaisons are doing. Mr. Socha is different. And I was fortunate to meet Mr. Socha when he was coming to AL Standback. And Sandra and her team have done a lot to help someone like Mr. Socha, whose family speaks?
He's, I think he's in Poland.
Right. Not the stereotype, right? Out of our normal sphere of influence from what you might think of as our family liaison team, except that what they're doing is helping people cross barriers. So, Ryan.
Hello, my name is Christoph Socha. I wanted to express my gratitude to Ms. Sandra Blavko and family engagement for help in enrolling my son into Orange County Public School System. Maybe my situation is a little bit more unique than average parent. Originally, I am from Europe and I, till recently, I didn't have any exposure to American educational system and enrollment process. So to be able, ask someone different questions and gain understanding, have help in navigating the whole process was extremely helpful and made the whole experience less overwhelming and stressful. I'm very thankful for this assistance. I consider this process, this program to be very beneficial for persons in my position and I hope it will continue for a long time. Thank you very much. Bye.
So again, I was fortunate enough during like my first weeks on the job to see this family, to experience not just Sandra working with this father and his child coming to school, but I also saw the principal engaging in, you know, hour-long, hours-long conversations to try and make families feel welcome, feel comfortable, understand how to navigate a very complex and complicated process that can go any different way depending on your family's situation. So it's really exciting that families then want to come back and share this kind of experience with us. Ryan, I'm sorry, boss. So that's the day to day. Then there's the programmatic work. There's so much more. And as you know, from looking at our strategic plan, we have key performance indicators. We, we have committed ourselves to successfully expanding the events that we have, right? Getting more people into the ones we already run, running more events, creating more opportunities to get families in the door and connected to our schools. And I think you might have remembered seeing this. What you can see here is our team past and, yeah, past, present and future. Melee, who is now back in the classroom. Mary Prado, who is an ESL teacher. And our, you know, again, Donette, at this point, was a very new staff member. And they were all at Standback for, for a number of different events during the, during the fall. The Parent Portal Event, you can see that like, it's not, there are so many different ways that we're putting information out in front of families. And the Parent Portal Event at Orange High School was so exciting. Of course, the one we tried to have at Standback was canceled by a really rogue, weird power outage. But then there's also the community partners coming in. And here you can see one illustration where Latinx Ed, which is an amazing nonprofit doing yeoman work to create new connections everywhere around the state and especially in communities like ours because we're so close to their nerve center. We're really excited when they come to us and when we also, like, we're, we're at the same table. We are around the table with people who are making things happen. So this is what the calendar looks like. If you go on our website and you look up the Family Academy Events Calendar, you see an immense number of things going on. And you can see that there are virtual events. That's what the V stands for. The Hispanic Heritage Movie Night. Really want to thank Mr. Williams for helping to put that on and make that possible. Sandra and, and it was just mind-blowing how much fun we had. If you were there, you know. But events at the high schools, at the elementary, middle and high school level, and bringing in so many people from outside. If anybody came to the newcomers event, you can see it on the calendar. I know you had a good time. These are upcoming events. And so Sandra, I wonder if you could explain what a Platicas Familiares, what does this mean?
So Platicas Familiares is a session where we have with our families, where they can talk freely about anything that they have in their mind or they want to learn about the schools. And it's just a space that we created and we did that last year and we continue doing it this year. We did one in the fall and we're going to do another one in the spring.
So the beauty of that is it sounds a little bit like a roundtable or a listen and learn or a town hall, right? So the good news is that these opportunities and doors are open to everyone and we want to make sure that that's happening. This is probably the most exciting thing, is that Sandra and her team have been, as I said, nothing if not fastidious in keeping track of who comes, where they're coming from and how we can continue improving. So notice the, the most recent events in the past couple of weeks since we just met, right? 55 families coming to Eflin Cheeks, 37 individuals checking in about our choice schools programs. That means they just wanted to learn about either the Cedar Ridge IB Program or Hillsborough Elementary School and the Year Round Program. And then communication tools. So what's it like when a family comes asking about how to use communication tools? What did you talk about, Sandra?
So we talk about different ways that they can use. We have a group of WhatsApp and they can also reach out to us that way. And we have many of our parents calling us through WhatsApp. But we also have other tools that teachers use at the schools, like ClassDojo, Talking Points. So they are also making that connection. And we were teaching our families that there is many ways that they can connect with the schools as well.
So we're at the, that's my last slide. But I've heard you talk a couple of times tonight about making sure that, that you don't have to go begging for money and that budgets really are kind of our, the way we show our priorities and what's truly important, where our values are. So I asked principals to give a little bit of feedback on like where the liaison program is today. Didn't throw it into a slide, but it's, I think it's some interesting data. One school said, you know, last year to this year, it's been about the same. I really appreciate the help. They're an amazing tool for connecting with families, providing support and communication, both for translation and interpretations and for parent nights. But while my school is at about 43% Hispanic and Latino today, it could be around 50% by the end of the year or early next year. That's a capacity issue. Another school, I'm not sure which families have worked with liaisons in the past. I know we've used them for interpretation and translation. Again, pretty common story. And that's comparable. I would love for, for them to work with families who might be interested in my school and help them navigate the application process. Well, there you go. And that is, we love working with equity teams. We love working with school administrators. And it's been really exciting to look at how marketing and promoting within the community, not at the community, but from within the community. Again, that's one of the initiatives that we're taking in part because of what we learned from the survey data, which was really hard to stomach. Another school, it seems to be working out well. I don't hear any feedback from parents or otherwise. It seems to be working out well. And it's a great way to communicate with our Spanish-speaking families. Biggest use, parent teacher conferences. So again, it's helping to meet a very real need. One school says, I don't have an assigned family liaison this year. That's a problem for me. They've been filling in the void of translating. That's wonderful. Our liaison last year was amazing, but we don't have one this year. So without a family liaison, some things could be improved. And, and the principal says, I've brought it up. Okay, that, that stings a little bit. The translations are happening on time. Wonderful, but here's what's missing. Actively reaching out directly to families to spread the word about events, questions and concerns. It would be beneficial for families to have an assigned liaison for our school again, focusing on proactively supporting, communicating and advocating for our Spanish-speaking families and our English learning students. Some of us have been to events at schools like this, where we've seen amazing communities come out and they really are looking for that kind of support. Our family liaison seems a little bit overworked and stressed by being asked to go back and forth between different schools. Okay, I don't, we have capacity issues and we are trying to do many more things. Again, there was a team of five at this point last year. Natalie and Sandra and the team, there were four liaisons plus Sandra working over 13 schools. And at this point, we have four. So you can do the math, right? There's a, there's a capacity issue. Last, last principle. This year, we are using our family liaison less for translating written materials and weekly messages and more for outreach to families. So someone is being strategic out there and that makes me very, very happy. But we would love to have even more time and availability. We're making it work. Thank you for helping us make it work. Thank you for joining the vision. This is not an action item, right? We're just, we're just sharing some information. But there's clearly a vision for what this can do. And our strategic plan, we have been directed by our community, by our learning community, to double the number of Black families who are engaging with our district in meaningful ways and quadrupling the number of Latino and Hispanic families that are engaging in meaningful ways. We can do that. I know that we can and this team knows that we can. So we're here to answer any questions that you have and thanks for letting us share about the work of our liaisons tonight.
Questions from the board? Carrie?
Just a comment. Señora Blavko, gracias por alentarme a estudiar español. Solo estoy practicando. But not only are we working and serving in a district that historically wasn't designed to serve all children, we have a rapidly changing and diversifying district of students. And, you know, my oldest, who was a kindergartner here once upon a time, is 20. And our MLL population has grown so much in those 50 years. We just need to keep working and better represent the students we serve. So thank you so much for your incredible efforts to that regard.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Anne?
I just would also like to say a big thank you to Sandra because I've worked with her before and I know that she is a very hard worker and she wants to help every parent she comes in contact with. And I'm glad she's got some more people working with her now. And I thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you so much.
Bonnie?
And of course, I am a huge, huge fan. And, and it's not just the translation, but the relationships and the trust that you have built between our schools and the community is extraordinary and I am so, so grateful for that. I have some questions and I know you've been at this for a lot longer than me. And when I was looking at some of the short, some of the short encounters, some of the longer ones, I know the need for translation services for non-English speaking families is huge. And I don't think that we've quite met our commitment of having Spanish-speaking bilingual people in every school. And, and there are disparities in our schools. Some schools have many more Spanish kids than others, many more Spanish kids with non-English speaking parents and, and real disparities in the amount of bilingual staff in the building. And my guess is the pie chart that showed the differences in schools, that has something to do with it. The staff and the capacity of the school to deliver its own services. So as you think about expanding this, and plus, I never, ever won, you know this. I never, ever won and you never would step on the schools. You work closely with the schools. So as you envision how this program evolves, the question becomes, to what extent should the family liaisons be part of the school-based team versus your team at the Welcome Center? Right? So what, I'll give you, like, would it make sense to put a bilingual person in the front office that can step into a translation in a second? And would that alleviate your team? And it might be at a slightly different level than just a basic, although the front, the folks in the, in the schools are, they do a lot of things. Anyway, you understand my point is when should they be on your team? Or how much routine stuff should be done in the school, especially a high-volume school? And how much should be done by the, your team in the Welcome Center?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Hauser. I, I see that, yes, we have a team and they spend most of the time at their schools. And on Fridays, they have a flexible schedule where they can come to the Welcome Center. But like, for example, if it's an emergency, they will travel from school to school. Or we have the person or doing the phone call, three-way communication, or we do the Zoom meeting. But I know what you said, we, we need more help. Yes, the need is growing and we need help. And, and we saw our partner school, Duran Public Schools, and see how they work. And they have, it is a little different. They have more help, like family liaisons, interpreters and translators and things like that. So, and family liaisons will be helping not only the connecting and navigating, but just like you say, build the relationships with the schools and the families. And so, I mean, just like you were saying, yes, we need more.
I guess I was wondering if I, if we doubled your staff, I'm making this up, right? If we doubled your staff, should they, should we put them in, in high-volume schools? Or should we keep them? And could we create a dotted relationship for some people between you and the principal? So the person would report to this, or the social worker, you know?
Of course.
So a little bit more, richer structure, anyway.
I mean, it would be ideal to, you know, have more staff that will assist our families. And at the school, I know you have some receptionists that are bilingual. It's not in every school. But that's when the, the schools can contact us, the secretaries, the principals. But what I'm saying, like, for part in confidence, you won't ask the secretary to help you with that. You will ask the secretary that is bilingual to help you with a call. Okay, your child is sick, you need to come and pick it up. For other types of, it will be better to have a family liaison.
Got it, got it. And that scheduling stuff, those 15-minute calls, it would seem that, that...
The 15-minute calls will be just for sick, the children that are sick. We, and also attendance or parents, yes. So it's the way that we communicate or email staff about attendance, about questions that the parents have. So that will be in the 15 minutes, when we have noted everything that the parents say or when we noted everything that the teacher or the staff is requesting. And those are like for emergencies, yes.
Okay, one more question, Will? One more thing is, is part of the goals, family engagement goals, or do we look at how, how, to what extent students participate in Orange County school programs? And I'm thinking about CTE and FFA and Avid and, and music and, you know, are we, you know, and are we identifying obstacles to kids participating in those programs because the parents might not fully understand it or have the resources for it?
Yes, ma'am. And we have a program, the Escuela Avancemos, where we talk about all these kinds of things. And we did one in the fall at Cedar Ridge and we're going to do another one in the spring at Orange High.
Great, super, thank you.
That's a start in what you were just describing. The program is great. We're talking about making sure that it actually percolates throughout the whole school instead of waiting to come to the family liaison team. We're talking about a team of five, which does an amazing work. But there are 1,000 staff in Orange County schools, right? So we, I think that's more the vision where we're going is how to expand this across the whole district. Yes?
Any other questions from board members? So I would just also like to extend my thanks to you, Ms. Blavko. You started the program and your fantastic staff. So much positive feedback on the program and we just appreciate everything you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I just want to thank also the family liaisons. They are amazing. They work really hard. And right now, one of them is recording the Spanish session. And I'm just very humble. And I've been here with Orange County Schools since 2006. And I just want to thank you, Dr. Felder, and all the staff in here for giving us this opportunity to serve our families. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra.
Excuse me. This is Dr. Moore.
Go ahead, Dr. Moore.
Hello, Dr. Moore.
Ms. Blavko, I want to thank you and your team for everything that you do. And as far as your evening events, if it's anything that I could do to be of service, I make myself available to you. Thank you again.
Thank you so much, Dr. Moore.
Thank you.
All right, board. With that, that completes our agenda. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move?
Second?
We have a motion and a second from Dr. Moore. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right. This meeting is-